Everyone, today is Monday, February the 22nd, 2021. Time is 11:02 a.m. This is our Commissioner's Weekly Status Update. We have a fairly full agenda. We'll try to move through it quickly and efficiently, calling the meeting to order, attending Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Phillyos. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I don't think so.
I hear of none. First item, and it's, and most of these are, in fact, are all discussion. Okay, so the first is the Kootenay Electric Building Future Planning. Go, Leslie.
All right, so in staying step with what you and Bill have been saying, and really all three of us, we need to know who's going from this campus to Kootenay Electric. And because we've had the all west study and all this, and Corey's extremely familiar with the Kootenay Electric Building, I think that we have a good opportunity to have Corey weigh in on some future, maybe five-year plan stuff about people moving here and there, and what kind of rehab will need to be done. So, I don't know if Sean or Corey wants to kind of step in here at this point.
Get as close as you can, Sean, for Bill's benefit.
The conversation was had with Leslie and Ken from LCA. Corey was there. And basically, it's a three-to-five-year roadmap, if you will, of not just who's going to go step in if I miss something, but not just who's going to go to Kootenay Electric, but who might take their place, how much would that cost you? So, they're wanting to put together a proposal, and they said it's not going to be an astronomical figure. Corey's going to do most of the work because he's familiar with KEC anyway. But I think it's a good idea because it would give you not just a roadmap, but it'll give it to you in phases so that you can say, okay, Kootenay Electric, Phase One, we're going to move the assessor. I'm just throwing stuff out. And it's going to cost us $250,000 to move them. So then you can say, we can budget for these moves as you go down the road and have a roadmap. And then you say, okay, well, who's going to take the assessor's place? Well, we're going to turn that into a big meeting room. Okay, what's it going to cost to remodel that TI for a big conference room? That's kind of what I think the plan is, correct?
Corey, did you want to comment?
Corey Trapp, I think that, you know, Sean hit the nail pretty much on the head. It's looking not just at Kootenay Electric, but also the Attorney Building, but it's looking at all your facilities, and what's the trickle-down effect potentially between the different facilities and looking down the road to plan for you. So you can set money aside in the future for some of these projects, too.
Okay.
So then I would suggest that we ask Corey to give us a proposal.
I'm good. Bill?
Great idea. I like Sean's use of the word.
I would like to discuss a name for this building because having to spell out Kootenay Electric every single time is, you know, so I don't know if we want to say County North, if we want to future a name for this building.
That's interesting. Bill, any thoughts?
I think it's premature right now. It's KEC or whatever you want to call it, Kootenay Electric, and leave it at that.
You mean for now?
For now.
Anybody else? Anybody have any thoughts?
We can't, though. That's the problem because people, it's not transparent enough.
Yeah, and we do own it. I mean, for goodness sakes.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. ICrimp requires you to have a name. That's why we called it the Annex, because for the insurance purposes, they want a name.
Sure.
And then somebody just has to notify John Geddy what the name of the building is. Because I believe you are carrying insurance on it now.
Yes.
Yes.
So you should, I know it seems premature, but just for insurance purposes, they do re, and you know, you don't have to do it right away, but yeah.
You know what? I'm fine with that. Kootenay County North?
Okay.
I'm good with that. Bill? Let's get something on the table here, just so that, we can always change it later, for goodness sakes.
Yeah, you can change the name. You can change it.
He's trying to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
I said, that's fine with me, especially as Sean points out, we need it for insurance purposes. That's no problem at all.
Okay. Kootenay County North, KCN, you okay?
Yeah.
Off we go.
Works with me. All right.
Oh, second item. Attorney Center Building Request RFQ Score. Oh, by the way, before we leave this, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I think it's a great idea what Corey's going to do. My thought, and please, you don't have to be guided by this, but I'm bringing this up because there are folks who are asking, well, wait a minute, you guys, I think you heard it, too, you just went off and bought a building. What are you doing? Well, here's one thought, and it's just a thought, and it's subject to whatever you guys come up with, Corey, is that if I were making, if it were my decision to make today, which it's not, but if it were, I would say assessor, community development, because a lot of the activity's up north and elections go up. That's about today, 130 people, that fills the building. Now we start to free up space, right? So, sell elections, JJC, which is juvenile probation.
Justice, no, juvenile justice.
Justice Building, thank you. On corner of Fourth and Lakeside, potentially move those people into where the prosecutor is today as they move into the new building. My point is, if we potentially free up assets that can be sold and bring some revenue in. Corey, you may come up with something entirely different, and that's fine. It's just.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, if you do away with the JJC, you lose two courtrooms.
And that becomes a challenge.
And then, and you cannot have juveniles and adults in the same place.
Well, that's the other issue. And that's why Corey's going to do what he's going to do.
Yes.
Just a reminder.
The other thing is, my understanding is every elected official must have their office in the county seat.
That's correct. And I was going to go down that. The assessor cannot go there.
Yeah.
Because they have to have, any elected official must have their office within the county seat. We've already been down that road. It's already met the legal challenges. It's set.
Does that mean the entire staff has to be here as well?
No, no, just the particular elected official.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for bringing that up. Got it. Okay, second item. Thank you.
All right, so on the architect, it was just the three of us doing the scoring, and then Sean was walking us through that. Sean had suggested, and I agree with him, to increase our three scoring team to five scoring team. And I think that Pete Barnes would be a really good person because he's only, he's analytical, plus he has investment in it. And then I'm going to volunteer our treasurer, Steve Matheson, to be that fifth body on that team, if he is willing to do that.
Steve, you okay? Okay. Treasurer Matheson is fine with it. So it would be Pete Barnes, Steve Matheson, plus us three?
Yes, and we have not spoken to Pete Barnes. So if you're watching Pete, so, and I can contact him about that if we're in agreement.
Okay.
And your architect can help walk you through the process. They just can't score it. They can't make any recommendations, but they've already said that they would be willing to help you as you go through the process.
Okay, so for the benefit of everyone listening in, what does the scoring apply to, Sean? Or Leslie, either one of you?
Well, it's going to be for your CMGC. So it'll be the same thing that you did for LCA. You'll have your rating sheet, and the RFQ will be weighted according to what you want, and then you just score it out.
Understood.
Yeah, so the construction manager, general contractor, correct?
Okay, good enough.
And that RFQ will be just about set in place this week, and then we will not put it out to bid until after legislature closes.
Which is what, end of March, supposedly?
Yep.
Okay. Item number, ready for third item? Okay, cool. Yeah, Steve, go right.
My understanding is they won't send D or whatever that, sign E, die, thank you, sign E, die. They will adjourn. So they, it won't, it's not a permanent thing, it's a recess. They'll go into recess or whatever their name for it is, and then they, that way they can come back, call those back into session. That's my understanding, but that's, I don't know where they're at with that.
Thanks, Steve. We ready for number three? Okay, item number three, underground parking for the Attorney Center.
So, in our meetings last week with all the stakeholders, it became apparent that a lot of money can be saved and storage space, which the county's in desperate need of, could be put in the part of the building that was going to be underground parking. The architects looking at it and looking at the, I guess, topography of the area, and Corey can weigh in here as well as Sean, they are suggesting that we do away with underground parking in there and that we use the additional space for storage or future growth.
Go right ahead.
Because, you know, when we looked at it, it's like eight spaces at the very most, and it's going to cost a lot of money to make that ramp to come down in there and, you know, make sure that all of those things that the city wants are right. And then the other problem is, if you're trying to come down in there or you're coming out of there, you have all that foot traffic coming into the building because it's right by the entrance to the building. So from a safety standpoint, it doesn't make sense. Now, they'll still, the vans will still come in kind of the same way they come in now, but they have more room, but there won't be a drive-through for them, and there won't be parking off of Garden Avenue.
Okay.
They'll save you a couple hundred thousand dollars, probably. Yeah.
And space-wise, what's the savings?
It's about a third of the basement would be open for storage because the mechanical stuff still has to go down there. Yeah, probably once mechanical's done, it's probably about 25%. So what, 25% of 12,000 square feet?
3,000.
Yeah.
That's substantial.
Yeah.
Okay.
And one of the reasons why that I'm in favor of this is because you have a jail pod right now that if it ever be built out and needed, you've got a bunch of stuff being stored in there, and we have no place for that stuff to go. And I know that there's other stuff stored throughout the county that really should be centrally located as well. So I thought that was a better use of the space rather than eight parking spaces is to have protected storage.
Okay. We good there? Okay, item number four, vacation of Garden Avenue. Why does this sound familiar?
So, I don't know if it's been a year and a half or almost two years, but we had talked to the city about closing down Garden Avenue so we could build on top of it. Well, obviously, we didn't go down that path. And there's still a portion, I think Corey can speak to this, a portion of Garden Avenue, the right-of-way for the street, that we would need to have access to to build our building. So if you can give more details.
Yeah, so what happened, the right-of-way for Garden Avenue is really wide. It's probably over 100 feet wide. And when the Justice Building was built, they vacated 35 feet of Garden Avenue to build that building. Well, that 35 feet, we could vacate that coming up the south side of Garden Avenue, and that, and we kind of need to do that to be able to build the building. Otherwise, we've got to build a building 35 feet shorter. And it should be, to me, it should be relatively easy to do. There's no value to the city to that 35 feet. There's no really any utilities in it either. That's a process that needs to be gone through, and you should be able to do that just with your staff in-house.
Right, so I guess I was asking if there was agreement that we would ask staff to go ahead with the process of requesting vacation from the city.
Steve, go right ahead, sir.
Just a question. It's vacating 35 feet of, or the street itself?
It's 35 feet of the right-of-way on the south side of Garden.
But it's not the street.
Correct, correct.
So it's like 35 feet of the judge's parking lot?
Yeah. And I would suggest, if you don't mind, that when you have patent rod hookup to do that, just get the whole thing in front of the courthouse, too.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, go all the way to government and just be done with it.
From justice to government.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number five, I put this on, building site for Attorney Center. The reason I added this is, from time to time, actually almost all the time, the question comes up, why are we not looking, before we break ground or get too far downstream with this, at building where the current annex sits? And so I thought I'd put this on the agenda and to give both Corey and Sean an opportunity to speak to this, so, only because it seems that we could potentially do more. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but who wants to take? You want to take a shot at it?
Yeah, I'll take it. So, there's two things that, we talked about this with the architect after the meeting we had last Thursday, and there's two problems with that. The first one, you might be able to get around it, but if you take parking spaces away by building a building, they're going to ask you for parking spaces. But, and you maybe could get around that, but the reality of the situation is that building has the holding cell in it. And so if you were to build it on the other end of the property, you're literally going to have to walk judges and inmates through two parking lots to get to the other two buildings, because you're only going to have two courtrooms in that building. But the whole thing in the basement is the holding cell and AMP. And it's already problematic, walking them from the holding cell outdoors into the two buildings. Now you'd be walking them across one parking lot, up the stairs, all the way across another parking lot, up a ramp, and then in it. It's, I don't think it would be a good idea.
Corey, you want to weigh in?
Sir, I agree with Sean. I think it's a potentially a big safety issue. The way we're working on the building right now is that the holding cells, we bring them in to there, and then they take them to an elevator that comes up the building, and from that elevator, we can walk them across over to the Justice Building. And what we've come up with is ways that that gap between the two buildings will fence it off on either end so that the public cannot get into that space and put a side obscuring fence up in there, too. So it becomes a better safety issue for all the staff and even for moving the inmates back and forth between court. If you do move them, if you did move the building, like Sean said, you have to walk people across parking lots in the open, and, or you have to put them in a van and drive them across the parking lot to get them to the other building. So, that site, I've always felt, I'm kind of with you, though, I've always felt that that site works, it would be good for an office-building portion of it, you know, you could put attorneys or something like that over there, but I think the court functions and the AMP, especially the holding cells, really need to be between the two court buildings.
Okay. So if parking and the subsequent transport or walking of the inmates is an issue, again, this, maybe this is intuitively obvious to some, but I have to ask, is, why couldn't we arrange the parking so that if we were to build at the annex, that's not an issue? Help me. If we were to build at the annex and we're putting two courtrooms in the annex, why is that any different than building where we're proposing to build today?
Because, because all of the inmates that are in your holding cell are going to all three buildings, not just that one.
Okay.
So your main holding cell now goes into the basement of that building. So that's, that's the issue.
Okay, okay. So it's a greater access issue, all right.
Yes, it just purely comes down to a safety issue of how far do you want to walk them? Because, like Corey said, right now, the fence, we're planning on putting a fence on the north and the south edge of the Justice Building. So then when they come up in that secured elevator, we're going to have a door that goes right straight out into the Justice. So now, the only building they're being exposed is the courthouse. That's the only one. Everything else, they're secured, they're not in public view, which I'm sure the bailiffs would tell you that they would not want to do that walk every day. Plus weather and all the other things that could come into play with that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else? Nancy, anyone in our staff want to comment? No? Okay. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
It, I don't want to deviate from the agenda. And I don't think we are, because we are discussing the building specifically, but okay, we're topping out right now, I think we agreed on a cap of, what, $20 million? Is that correct?
Yes.
I guess the question I have, and I can do this during public comment, but the question I have for you, Sean, are we cutting it too close? Do we need to go bigger? Because we're not going to get a chance to do this.
Yeah, I think so, but that's just my opinion. And the reason why I say that is, when we, for those of you who didn't see it, Leslie saw it, what we did last Wednesday and Thursday is, LCA came in and they laid out on the eight-foot table a floor plan. And then they had these little pieces of cutouts, like conference rooms, to scale so that it would fit on that 12,000 square feet of floor plan. And then Public Defender and Prosecutor, they came in and they designed with these little cards how they wanted it to flow, where the hallways would be, the conference rooms and all that stuff. Anyway, as I'm looking down at those two and keeping in mind that this is a two-and-a-half to three-year design, build, move-in-ready, there's already no room. Their floors are full. I think Barry had, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe three places, three or four places where you could put up a wall and make an office, and was full. So.
She did have expansion space.
Go ahead, Corey, you can come up.
Yeah, she had expansion space in a storage area, but my point is just that I'm looking at it, and it's already full, really close to full.
There's very little expansion room for anybody. In the program, we had planned two or three additional offices within those departments, so they have a little bit of growth, but they may realize that growth in the next two to three years already. And then there was an additional space of maybe where you could create maybe four more offices down the road in the future. The other part of that, I think, is that at that 20 million, the prosecutor, there's no, there's no place for the prosecutor in the building. He would probably have to stay where he's at now, because I think the last, the last proposal that we gave to you guys, prosecutor wasn't in the building, he was staying where he was at.
That's correct.
That was to keep it.
That was to get it to 18. So maybe at 20, you can get him in there. It just, I mean, I don't have to say it, or you know how I feel about it. You've got one chance to do it, and this is it. And if you take all your money that you have saved up for a rainy day and you spend it all on your building, and then now you have no money left for a rainy day, and who knows how long it's going to take to build it back up again? That's just my thought.
When I look at the different options that you guys presented, LCA presented, are we currently, I mean, we set the ceiling at 20 million bucks, but are we looking at what is considered Option 4A, and I'll read it, I'll read what it, which incidentally is about 20.9 mil, okay? And it says AMP and BLCC do not move into the building, large courtroom, okay, prosecutor and public defender limited to 11,000 square feet. Is that what we're looking at today?
No, that's not the one.
That's not the one.
No, I think it was one of the three.
Is it?
Option six was the one that Corey's talking about.
Yeah, I think it was Option six.
Option.
The last one, the three options.
Yeah, Option six shows just a lot of shelled space.
Yeah, that's just, that's the 17.9 million. Okay, so AMP goes into the building, BLCC does not.
Right.
Prosecutor stays in the old courthouse.
Right.
But there's shelled space for him?
Yes.
Right. Public defender moves into the building, limited to 12,000 square feet, and then covered parking in the building. You're going to do away with that.
We're going to do away with that.
So that's what we're looking at today?
And it should have some court, it should have courtrooms in it, too.
Right.
So.
48,200 square feet.
Which is basically four floors.
Yeah, four floors.
Which wouldn't, those four floors don't include the prosecutor. There's not a, there's not a rough end floor for the prosecutor in that scheme.
Understood. What's interesting is when I go, when we set the ceiling, I'm sorry, what has changed since? Because we set the ceiling at 20 mil, and when I look at, for example, Option Five, that's at 18.3, and that takes us up to 56,000 square feet. So kind of like where we are, where are we?
When we, when we did that, that last Scheme Six, the ceiling was 18 at that point. I think you've raised it since.
Well, not necessarily. We've, here's the problem, 18 was our hard cost, that was the cost of the building, the 20 million was going to, that extra $2 million between the bond and what we agreed to with the building is going to be for soft costs. So that's where we.
That's where it goes to 20.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the building itself is still at 18, but the.
So it's essentially Option Six.
Right. And so that's part, that comes, come all the way back to kind of the master punting idea a little bit.
Right.
Is that when you move people out, if the prosecutor stays where he's at, we're moving people out of the, AMP moves out, that creates space for him in that, in that building potentially.
Right.
If he stays there. So that's why looking kind of globally at shifting the pieces and parts around a little bit within the county makes some sense.
If we agree to your proposal, what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
I need to talk to Ken a little bit more, but I think we can do it pretty quick. I mean, probably.
By April?
Oh, yeah.
May?
Probably May.
Okay.
April would be tight.
Okay.
And that's the timeframe for design?
Doing the master plan.
Oh, the master plan, okay.
Right, so for instance, if community development were to move out, then the prosecutor would have more space here, just for an example, not for, you know, real.
And that would coincide with your CMGC because the, you're really not going to have, I mean, right now you have an estimate based off of $350 to $400 a square foot. Once you pick your CMGC, they're going to start going to work on the bidding part of it and figuring out how much the different subcontractors are going to charge to do the different work. So I would, unless I'm wrong, Corey, I would stay with what you're doing right now, at least for now, and then, once you get your CMGC on board, then they're going to give you a much better idea of what that number is going to be.
Right.
Okay, so that being the case, and assuming we stay on course with what is today, Option Six, what would be, if we decide that this isn't really going to cut it, that we really have to go a little larger, what's our deadline? That we don't incur additional cost unnecessarily in making that change?
That's, that's hard to answer.
I know.
Because we're not going to have the CMGC on board until.
Right, so it's kind of the cart thing.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can give you some ballpark number ideas, and we're trying to use numbers a little bit on the high side because we're trying to project cost a couple years in the road.
Sure.
So we would rather err a little bit on the high side than be too low. So, I don't know the right answer to that necessarily. I think that a lot of it depends on when are you going to, how are you going to finance it and what you want to set the number for.
Right.
If we don't have a CMGC involved, then that puts the ball back in, I guess, in our court to give you some best kind of estimates.
When are we looking at getting the CMGC on board?
Well, if you put it out.
Go ahead.
The end of March, you got to advertise it twice in the paper, back-to-back Mondays, 14-day advertisement, and then add two weeks to that.
Okay.
To give them time to put the packets together. So you're looking at a month, and then that, then you would have them due at the business meeting a month from whenever. So let's say, first of May, they're due. Well, then after that, it's really up to you guys how quickly you can get together your team and score them. Because LCA has offered to help you interview, if it comes down that you have two that are really close, they said they would help you interview the, they just can't make. the, they just can't make the selection and they won't.
So what I'm trying to do is get a sense for the timeline. So let's say hypothetically, using the timeline that you just proposed, Sean, which is probably realistic, we would be likely making a decision on the CM, a selection on the CMGC, say, by mid-May.
Yes.
Roughly, okay?
Yes.
If we only took two weeks for the scoring and then awarded, okay?
Right.
It's right around the time that.
We'll find out if the bond passes.
The bond passes. So now, let's back up a little bit. Because if the bond goes out at 20 mil and we decide we need to make a change, we're up the creek. So we.
Well, I I I'm not so you're up a creek. I mean, because really what you're going to do is you're just going to add floors. But that's going to have a lot to do with the structural engineering and stuff that's already probably going to start taking place. But.
You're, I think you're talking more about.
Financing.
Finance, I'm talking about the financing. If we go out for a year.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Guys, this isn't enough. It's going to go to 22 million bucks.
Right, so so then the option is then, do you decide to take money from another source to raise it?
Correct. And if you're talking over three years, I mean, we could, we could do a couple million in three years.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to get that on the table, just that we, yeah, okay.
Good.
I did have something to add to that, though, and it's gone.
It'll come back.
It 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 should come back.
I mean, if you want to stay on that, we could just stay on that. And I can tell you, the meeting Wednesday and Thursday went well. Everybody attended.
Go right ahead and this way, maybe.
Sure.
Maybe it'll come back to everybody, everybody attended. The plan now is for them to come back in about three weeks and meet with the stakeholders again.
So the week of March 10th is what they were targeting?
Okay.
So if you could look at your schedules and we can set up some times.
Sure. Yep.
You, too.
Yes, we'll do that.
How many folks have you met with?
We've met with everybody. Yeah, we met with Public Defender, Prosecutor, AMP, District Court. And I may add all of District Court. We had the clerks and KCSO for the holding cell. So we pretty much ran the gamut of everything that we needed to get, so it went really well. I thought it went really well.
It did.
It went better than I thought it was going to go.
All right.
Okay.
Did it come back to you yet?
No, that's all right. That's all right, it's a long process and we'll be.
It is a long process.
Chris, I was going to, I was going to add just one little thing, too, you know.
Right ahead.
In the whole project scope of the 20 million that you're talking about, if we leave the prosecutor where he's at and you move some space out, there would be some remodeling cost in that part of the building.
That's true, too.
Potentially, too. So that could be.
So now we need to weigh that against going bigger.
Right.
Yep.
So that might be less expensive than moving them over and showing them some space, too.
Right.
Those are things to consider also.
I did remember. So the architect had the SRE building at the airport coming in at about 350 a square foot. Now that they have a CMGC that they're writing a contract with, he brought it down to 175 a square foot. So we have potential of that happening, which means we will get more for our money.
But you will not until you get your CMGC.
That's correct.
I can tell you that this building will not be 100%.
No, I I totally understand that. I'm just saying that.
No, no. Don't worry, Corey, we weren't trying to corner you with.
No, no, no.
It's, a lot of it's just the detention and the courts. That's your driving cost for the dollar.
Steven isn't building.
No, office space is office space, you know. But I think you're, you know, I have seen in the past where the CMGC has come in and saved considerable money. That's, that's what they're, that's what they do. I mean, you tell them, I got 18 million dollars and that's all I got.
Right.
Make it happen. That's what we do with the jail. We got 10 million dollars, that's all you get. No, actually, it was 11, we saved a million dollars on it, but.
Worst thing we could do is come in and tell you you could build it for $200 a square foot.
You don't want that's.
Right, no, exactly. And I understand the process. I'm not, I'm not bagging on that at all. I just am saying, I'm hopeful. I always have hope, so.
We do, too.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
It's all you have. Um, I have a question, and I I don't know if it's a, if Dave Ferguson were here, he'd probably get upset. But do you want to discuss the financing? Or are we out of line here?
Well, I mean, it's part of facilities expansion, and we have ballot bond language also on our pending items.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We do, I was just looking at that, okay. You know what? Let's go to the pending items and then we get to that level, we can. Go ahead.
If before we leave the building.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've had a nagging feeling for a long time that in many of these pieces, we've got the cart before the horse.
Go ahead.
Uh, they're very important, we have a roadmap and a timeline. Because every time I've seen government build a space, it's it's always at least as big as they need, and it always gets filled up. And when you set a budget, it usually goes over. And uh, we are in a time when we we don't have the luxury. I know we need space, but there's been a revolution in how people work and including how at the county. It's usually an evolutionary process, but in the last year, because of COVID, it's been a revolutionary process. And we need to acknowledge that and take that into account. We might find we need a lot less space than we think we do.
That's a good point, okay, okay.
So so Bill, I totally am on the same page with you and I agree. And that's why I was hoping that if we go ahead with the proposal to get that roadmap and that roadmap comes in in May, the same time we're select selecting the CMGC, I think it's all, I think it's on a really good timeline. And I'll have that written out so we we can keep track of it.
And you're also proposing that people this be presented, be presented to the voters in May?
That's correct. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, that I would like to be able to tell the people that I bump into around the county that we have a roadmap and we have a plan and here's why we need what we need precisely. Instead of, we're going to, we're going to go out for a bond for X number of million dollars. And uh, we'll figure out where people go and what happens later. And that's pretty much where we're going right now.
I think we're kind of almost there because we have to have courtrooms. That can't be at Cootney County North. The Public Defender can't be there, the Prosecutor can't be there. So I think that, at least I'm comfortable with the fact of of saying, we need 20 million dollars because these people need homes. This, this needs to happen. Now, the space that gets opened up in admin with people moving out to the north, you know, that's something that we don't, we're not even asking for money for at this point. So I I do understand where you're going and that's why I'm very hopeful that by the end of April, beginning of May, we'll have that roadmap. But right now, it's still all about the courtrooms and about the Public Defender and about those things that have to be on campus.
Bill, I think what you'll find is the way the timeline is looking, much will be converging DA as to who's moving into Cootney County North. So we'll be able to answer those questions while at the same time we're addressing the question of the bond. It it should all come.
I like.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I like having a bond. If we're if we're going to use, let's ask them if we can. The problem is, the atmosphere right now is very anti-bonds and levies and everything else. And I want to know what we're going to do if that's turned down in May because we don't do a good enough job educating people as to why they should vote for it.
Okay, now that, that's a good question. And I think when we, when we, as we move through the pending items list, I think we're going to come to that and we'll take it up. We can do that within a few minutes. How's that?
That's fine.
Okay, so so we can move on to the pending items list, then? Okay. First item, your Citizen Advisory Committee, you've got that on hold. That, are you shooting for late October?
Yeah, not October. Yeah, that's a, that would give me some time. No, I I want to get the County Form of Government Study Commission bylaws done and that comes in the next item. But let me speak to that right now if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I would, if possible, I would like about 20 minutes at our next status update to present to the commission and anybody else who's interested, a draft that I've done for the bylaws for the study commission. And just really go over it and answer questions and present it in writing and put it wherever people need to see it so they can get a copy of it if they'd like to see it.
Okay, so March 1st, we can put that as its own separate item and and have that discussion. Bill, will we be able, will Chris and I be able to see those before that day?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
So March 1st, or is it next Monday?
Next Monday is.
Monday is the first.
March 1st.
Whatever. Okay, got it. That's right, we're 28 days.
Next month, yeah.
Okay, you got it. 20 minutes, next week, March 1st. Draft of the bylaws for the commission to study the alternative form of government. Did I say that right?
Almost, but go, it's okay.
For the commission to study, okay. Anyway, facilities expansion, we we pretty much discussed it. But I guess on the question of financing, and I think Bill started to take us down this path. Okay, so we're going out for the bond. Steve, would you give me the correct term for the bond, please? Because I keep calling it revenue bond and.
General Obligation Bond?
General Obligation, thank you. General Obligation Bond. G O B. Okay. Okay, so position, and I think it's fair to say this, is is this, the question that goes before the voters is not a question of whether or not the building gets built. It's a question of whether or not we finance it using the General Obligation Bond. So the question that I have is what happens if it if it fails? What is our Plan B? Thoughts?
Saturday court? I don't know at this point. I don't know enough about the certificates of participation or you called it a lease option, Steve. I don't know what the other things are called, other options are called. But I think that needs to be part of the education process leading up to the vote, for sure. That, you know, if that's the way that you want it presented, that it's going to get, at least two of the three of us are going to build it with or without the bond, then I think that's a, something that needs to be definitely presented.
So so if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is present the other options?
Meaning, when we're doing education about the bond, if this building is going to be built, bond approval or not, then the the fuller picture needs to be, these are the two funding options. The bond is on the ballot. If the bond fails, this is going to be the second funding option.
Okay.
Instead of just saying, okay, if the bond fails, there will not be a building.
Steve, go right ahead, please.
I think this is the most important question you guys can ask and answer sooner than later.
Okay, so here's another approach. And and I I don't know that it's a good one, but I'm going to throw it out. The other option is obviously forgone. And people hear forgone, they think it's a dirty word, okay, whatever. And that's something that we would have to explain. So the question that I have, and anybody's read a way in here, is, okay, so we put the General Obligation Bond on the ballot, but the explanation, and I think, Steve, you've done a good job of of pretty much, you know, drafting the language. Do we also then, do we give the people a choice and say, okay, likewise, we could go forgone, here's what the math looks like? And give the folks, excuse me, the residents, a choice?
Is a lease a third option? I mean, one of the three?
Yeah, I used to, you could, how do I answer that?
Why, is that something you would entertain?
I don't, you know, I don't know if I would entertain the lease. The conditions are pretty stringent, right? Because we transfer the asset to the lien holder. And I don't know if that's a.
It's definitely risky, definitely expensive.
It's risky and potentially expensive. I don't know, Steve, do you want to comment on that? You probably have a better handle on this than than we do.
If you would like to join us at the table.
Why don't you just sit here, it's easier.
Unless you're trying to get your steps in, then I'm walking back and forth.
Well, this is actually a commissioner conversation, and that's why I hesitate coming and participating. I don't want to take a position on whether the building is necessary or not. This is under your purview and you guys are going to make that decision. My frustration is that you've got to make a decision sooner than later on how are you going to fund that building. Forgone balances, you could exhaust in one year or two, but that's not going to get you the amount of money. So what you actually have to do is make a decision as the board to leverage that forgone, which means.
Go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and take $2 million a year from forgone, leverage it in the form of a lease appropriation type of structure. So then you can borrow the 20 to 25 million dollars to build the building. What you've done then is you've locked in the forgone commitment to fund that $20 million acquisition of a building. Am I making any sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you're going to use forgone balances, you're still going to have to go down a structure where you quote-unquote borrow the money to build the building.
That's the lease purchase.
Right.
Or certificate of participation.
Which is one structure of a lease purchase, yes.
Right, so I have two, two thoughts on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of them, they're already, you know, the legislature is already looking to restrict our forgone use. The second thing is, no, if if we go with any other structure than a General Obligation Bond, we have to have that funding piece in place. And if forgone is not going to be that funding piece, then we can't enter into a lease at all. We have to have the funding piece. And with the legislature taking away some of our funding opportunities, that's where it gets sticky. And that's where, right now, I can't say for sure that I will go with any other funding except for a General Obligation Bond. Because I have to see what the legislature is going to do. I have to see what our needs are coming up. Because over and over again, today included, we have motor vehicle licensing issues that need to be addressed, and that's going to be an expensive fix at this point. So without seeing some of the, you know, new needs this year, without knowing exactly what the legislature is going to do, because we know what the Senate suggested, but whether the House will pass that and whether the House has their own, it's kind of up in the air. So for me, that's why it's even more risk, go with the lease or any other funding option because we don't have the funding mechanism to actually pay back the debt.
That's correct. But as we've spoken individually, you can capture forgone.
Right.
Before the legislature decides.
Because if the legislature makes a decision, typically that decision goes into effect in July. It could be next January, but let's assume worst case, it goes into effect in July. And if we don't take advantage of the forgone before then, we're basically screwed from that perspective, to Leslie's point.
I think that's a distinct possibility, yes.
Sean, you want to speak?
I just, the longer the wait you wait, the more it costs you. And that's just from a construction standpoint and that type of thing. Pardon me. Pardon me. And secondly, I, I've said it before, I feel bad that, that, that this can got kicked down to the three of you because it, I've been on this bandwagon for six or seven years now. I saw it coming. But the bottom line is, and what Steve says is correct, the 10 million is not gonna get you anywhere close to what you need to do.
Sure.
And you need to do it. It, it's just not, in, in my, after looking at the, the floor plans and the exercise and what I saw last week, it's just not an option. I mean, there's just, you know, you can justify your public defender that they will actually pay for their own floor just off of your savings of rent.
The 10,000 a month that it's costing us currently.
And it's probably gonna go up because they need more space already now.
Correct.
So you can justify one floor. And I, I don't know, that's just my thoughts, but.
Steve, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Well, okay, I, the thing, I guess, coming almost full circle, right? What I'm thinking is this, okay, so we go out for the general obligation bond, it passes, wonderful, case closed, we move on, right? But if it fails, and, and let's be realistic here, if it fails, and I'm not saying it will, I don't know, but if it fails, does the public walk away saying, you don't get a building? And I'm saying, oh, yes, we do. You need to know that when you cast your vote. Your vote is not for the building, it's how we finance the building.
Right.
And I presume that's a fair statement.
And yes, I mean, that's part of the education, part of it the whole way along. I mean, I'm seeing flyers every day on the different school levies and that's where the education piece is going to be. Okay, this is one funding option. These things have to happen. I mean, we can also have a candid conversation. If this building isn't built, this is what it could look like down the road. You know, it could look like people are in jail over a year waiting for their trial when if they are convicted, their sentence would have been nine months.
So much for speedy trial, right? That the constitution.
Correct. And, and I mean, it's just, it's a huge domino effect. Now we can't keep prosecutors or public defenders because their working conditions are such that they're overworked, they don't have space. I mean, it's, there's a trickle down effect. So people don't like to talk about the justice services, but it is 60 plus percent of our budget. It's really what government exists for, is that, that justice piece of it. So it is an ugly reality, but I look at places like New York and things where, I mean, the, the court system's completely backed up.
Yes, it is.
So I don't want to have that in Cootney County and it's important that everybody understands, our representation on both sides, prosecutor and public defender, have to be well-funded, well-supported, because that's the only way we can remain Americans, in my opinion, if you have that piece in place where, you know, the bad guys go to jail and the good guys don't. So this is something that just costs money and I wish it didn't, but here we are.
That's the reality. Okay. Again, my, my concern is if it, again, if it flies, that's great, the general obligation bond, but if it fails and we have to resort to an option, I guess I, back to your point about education, Leslie, is I don't want to be in a position where people are coming at us and saying, wait a minute, we voted this down. And the answer is no, you voted down that method of financing, not to Leslie's point, not the building. The building has to occur. It's just a question of whether or not we finance it with a general obligation bond.
Totally agree.
Right. And had we had more ducks in a row last year, we could have put it on as an advisory vote question in an even year to say.
Right.
We've got this building. Here are your three options. This is what it'll cost you. Pick your best one. And then we could have done that, but that's not available, except that our lovely Ms. Jones could actually probably do a Facebook poll, which would be great to start that education process. So, um, I think we can start now getting some education out.
Okay.
I think the, uh.
Go ahead, Bill.
I think the question on the ballot, I think the question on the ballot, uh, should start out and say, we're taking your money. Would you rather have us take it A or B?
I don't know that legally we can do that, but we'll definitely check into that.
Now, when you say.
I know, but that's, that, that's the effect. We're going to take your money from, for the general obligation bond that you vote for or we're gonna take it through forgone taxes. I mean, that's what we're telling people and we need to be very upfront about that.
Steve, I have a question. If you had to depict on a, on a ballot, the forgone option, is it too complex to put on a ballot? Because you're using the forgone to leverage, in essence, the lease purchase or some other form.
I hesitate giving a response. I think you have to clearly delineate whether you're gonna go for a general obligation bond and it has to stand on its own, pure and simple. So I don't think you can, even though you might want to mingle these two questions. Unfortunately, the commissioners are in a position that they have to make a difficult decision.
Sure.
And that difficult decision is how are you gonna fund it? I'll speak frankly, the general obligation bond is going to fail and I'll publicly say that. So now you're gonna have to be forced to make a decision. Do you want to use a different form of funding to build the building? That's up to you.
Okay. Well said.
I would agree.
And you're right. I can't argue with you. I mean, we're in a tough spot.
I would agree and, as you know, I'm leaving, but you need to make that decision sooner than later. That's the one thing that I've been very consistent about is you need to figure out how you're gonna pay for it and how much you want to spend. Because that, that, everything else that you do down the road from there, all hinges on what Steve's saying needs to be done. Am I correct, Corey? You gotta figure, so if, for instance, if you wanna say, you know what, the bond's gonna fail, you could try it. I, I agree, it's probably gonna fail. It's hard enough just to get a school bond passed, but you know, that's, so then if you're gonna go down that road of, we're gonna borrow the money, if you can leverage your forgone to make those payments for you, then build option two. Just go for it and be done with it and don't take all your money that you have for a rainy day out because you still have a county to run.
Sure, sure.
You have DMV things that are gonna happen.
I, I think that we've, I don't think this board is suggesting that we use all of our fund balance.
Right.
No, 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 I know that. I know that. Yeah, I know that. But I'm just saying that you could, you know, you could get more realistic of what you need if, if, if you're gonna borrow, borrow. I mean.
Right.
That's my thought.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Good discussion. But it is, it is a good discussion.
Uh, one quick thing.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, if, you know, it, it is fairly apparent that we need more space and I'm not gonna argue with it. I'd like to see it and see a good timeline. And if we decide to go with the bond, I will be out there promoting that, uh, as much as I can to people and explaining why we need this, this new building and why we, we, isn't it better we do it with a bond than with forgone taxes? So I just, I, I, I commit to that. I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, fair enough. And, and I think the road we're on right now is to, is to go forward. We haven't officially voted on it, of course. With the general obligation bond is the only measure on the ballot and we haven't voted yet, but to your point, Sean, we're gonna have to do that quick. But I'm, I'm still on board.
Sure.
I think it's gonna be a challenge, but, go ahead, Steve, please.
At the risk of making a stupid statement, I don't distinguish between the difference of forgone and a general obligation bond. It's all property taxpayer money. It's just a different.
Approach.
That's all.
No, I mean, I, I tend to agree and, and one of them is, um, the balance will go away and then it won't be available anymore, which I think is a good thing.
That's correct. That is a good thing.
You know, the other thing is the financing. If, if it's the same amount of money on your taxes for a general obligation bond versus the forgone paying back the lease, then, I mean, we have to have that discussion, too. Right now, it's about $4.44 per 100,000 in value. So it's gonna cost me less than $9 a year.
Million dollar bond, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Go ahead, Steve, please.
Just remember, those calculations were done a week ago. They change each and every day based on what interest rates are doing.
Based on interest rates, yeah.
Sure.
I also picked a, I think I picked a 20-year amortization.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
You can pick whatever amortization you want.
You can go 30, right?
30, you could probably even go 40 or you could go 15. Um, but I'll, I'll reiterate again, to me, as a finance person, there's not a distinction between forgone and a general obligation. It is taxpayer dollars. End of story. And as you guys know, uh, you don't need voter approval to spend forgone.
Speaking of forgone, I don't know, do you, if you have the numbers handy, I know Nancy, you did some calculation. If we were to take forgone, and it depends on how much we're, whatever it is, 10 million bucks, what does that come out to in terms of the addition to a tax, to a taxpayer? Do we have any?
Rough numbers would be about $92. So opposed to the $9, my house would be $92 for that.
This is my point.
Go ahead.
It's gonna be the same thing. If you choose to.
Right.
Spend 20 million dollars and you choose to amortize it over 20 years, it's going to be similar, if not exactly, to the general obligation calculation. There's not a distinction here.
It's just one takes longer, the other is.
Well, it, it depends on how much you're taking. Um, if you're only taking enough forgone per year, which I think is what Steve is suggesting.
Right.
To pay that 20-year bond or the 20-year obligation back, then it's gonna be the same amount as if we had the general obligation bond.
Exactly right. That's what I'm saying.
Except interest rate, right? Because a general obligation bond will be less interest rate than a, a different vehicle.
Uh, de minimis.
Okay.
I mean, you're talking 10 basis points, so.
But if you're talking 92 bucks a year.
No, that's, that's the high end for taking all 10 million in one year.
Right, precisely.
And we wouldn't do, we wouldn't need to do that, is what it sounds like. Sounds like we would only take the amount.
You'd probably take about 2 million is what you would do because that's gonna go, I mean, if you do the math, the 2 million per year is gonna fund a $20 million, $20-year amortizing bond.
Okay. So in the end, so in the end, it's a virtual wash.
Yep.
In terms of the hit to the taxpayer.
Yeah, the taxpayer's gonna pay, it's just whether it's forgone or whether it's a, a general obligation bond.
Fair enough.
And then, um, if you would get with Chandra and get the meeting, uh, get her the information so she can set up with the bank and with the.
Well, I wanted to have this, I was hoping that you would bring this up, Chris, and I think Bill brought it up as well. This conversation is helpful because I didn't want to continue to go down a path.
Yes.
I hadn't consistently heard that all three commissioners were saying, yeah, the building's gonna get built. And it sounds like it's gonna be 20 million, give or take. Okay, with that said, and again, I'm not taking a position on that, now you have these different ways that you can fund it.
Precisely.
The general obligation, in my opinion, will fail miserably. So now, if you guys are committed to build a $20 million building, your options are now limited.
Sure.
Which is, in my opinion, the use of forgone, which could be taken away during this legislative session, which is why I again, reminded you guys all a couple of months ago, if you're committed to do this, you probably need to open up the budget now, claim the forgone, close the budget and then fund the 20, and then, then you've claimed that funding source. Now.
And, and if the bond should pass.
You could then open the budget back up.